Twenty-two.
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry.
Got it. This meeting is on Zoom and is being recorded and we've started the recording. I request that if you're not speaking, please keep your mic muted to try to cut down the feedback, although it hasn't been bad so far. The record will note that all the current members of the commission are present. There was currently one vacant member position, so we are seven member commission at this point. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So Paul White Scarver is appointed as a voting member to fill the vacant voting member position. Also President Juliet Hodge, the town planner, my chair, is zoning enforcement officer against the Woodlock, the land use assistant. Tim Ryan, the town council liaison is excused. Before moving on, I would like to request that anyone who wants to speak identify themselves by name. And if you are not a member of the commission or representative of the town, that you state your address for the record the first time. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance. Next item is citizens petitions, and I know Bobby Barnett is here, so Bob is, and you're not speaking on, I'm sure you're not speaking on the re-subdivision applications that we have later in the agenda, so we will have you speak now.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, on my agenda, it says number four approval of additions to or changes to the order of the agenda, not that there are any, but.
My, my number four says citizens positions.
All right. I don't know what I have, but okay.
Yeah, mine says citizen positions and then I don't know, but anyway, I'm looking at my agenda which says citizen petitions, we'll go with that. I do have that on my agenda though, Julia, thank you. All right, Mr. Barnett, the floor is yours.
All right, mine's a quick question, and if we were to move forward in the future on trying to add non-hosted short-term rentals to the zoning uses. I think I might know how to proceed forward with that. I don't really quite know how, but um. And my question was like, what would the biggest concerns be from the zoning commission that we would have to think of a solution for? And would it be the party houses, the number one big concern, or was there other concerns?
Let me first, first let me comment that yes, we do have on our, on our plans to address the, the non-hosted short-term rentals for residents of the town like you. And my suggestion is that you talk to Juliet about it directly and go back and forth that way rather than us doing it here. But it is something we are aware of, it is something we would like to address. We haven't forgotten about you. And so you are, you are on our plans. I think I, I'm speaking for the rest of the commission when I say that.
So Juliet would know the concerns that the commission would have.
And she'd be the one that would end up helping us draft the regulations, so that would be the, I think that's the place I would start.
All right, thank you.
I, not that I want to put more things on Juliet's plate, but
Everybody else is.
Everybody else does, so why shouldn't I? Thank you, Mr. Barnett. I do not believe there are any other. I'm sorry, Eric, do you something you want to?
Oh, yeah, real brief. Eric Trister, Ten Huntington Way. As you, as you know, I tend to worry about the unintended consequences of land use policies and regulations. And I am concerned about potential unintended consequences of allowing detached accessory dwelling units in single-family residential neighborhoods by right. Later this evening, under old business, it appears you will continue the discussion of whether the commission should opt out of the mandatory ADU statutes that will otherwise become effective on January first. I urge you not to make a decision at this time, but instead to treat Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine as simply a proposed zoning regulation change. Schedule its public hearing, conduct the hearing, call in experts, gather public input, and then deliberate and vote, and treat the application exactly the same as you would treat any proposed change to the zoning regulations. I think it's fair to the public that they have an opportunity to, to address this, this, this complicated issue. That's just my thoughts. I appreciate it. Thank you.
To comment briefly, there will be an opportunity for input on the implications of twenty-one, twenty-nine. I do not believe that a, a, a state statute is in fact a, a change to the zoning regulations under the law, so I don't think it is necessary that we hold a public hearing like we would on any other zoning change, but there is, we will not be simply adopting twenty-one, twenty-nine without the opportunity for citizen input. The question is what kind of input we're going to have, and we'll talk about that when we get to that, that agenda item.
Thank you.
You're unmuted, Tony.
Thank you. Thank, catch me folks if I do that. Are there any other citizen comments on items that are not on the agenda? If not, when now move to my.
Yes, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
My name is Giancarlo, my name is Giancarlo Sarita. I am a non-resident property owner of Ledger. And I purchased a property in September two thousand twenty-one as a second home for my family, and one of the things that we had planned was to use it partially as an SDR. I know Mr. Burnett touched on it, but I think I heard you say that he's a resident. I'm a non-resident property owner, trying to get information on non-hosted SDRs.
Currently, that is not permitted under the regulation.
And are there plans to address that?
I can't speak for the commission when we adopted the, the hosted regulation, it was not our intent to include that. We want, but we want the person who owns it to be, at least in the current regulation, they must be present.
Right, so I read the regulation and, you know, like I mentioned, and I'm going to be brief. We purchased it last year and we were going by the existing ordinance. Actually, I got the insurance that I needed, I got the fire marshal inspected, but now the rules have changed. So I'm kind of, kind of blind, and I was wondering if there's not in through this forum, is there is any, any other avenue that I can follow to try and get additional information on this topic?
You can come talk to me.
All right.
At town hall if you want to. I mean, it's obviously it's something that's coming up, and I, I just want to say it's complicated because of some, you know, statutes requiring uniformity. In other words, it would be very hard to say if you're a resident of town and have a second home, that that home can be used as an SDR. That's not going to fly if you say that somebody who doesn't live in town but owns a second home in Ledger can't have it as an SDR. That's going to be illegal, because you have to treat each property the same way. So it's going to take some discussion to figure out how to get around how to deal with the potential issues that we saw and feel are going to happen, like the, you know, the the holding companies that own or snatch up all the available houses and use them as SDRs, you know. It's a, it's a, it's a complex topic, and we're not sure how to address the non-hosted. I mean, if, if it's a ton of people just want it, then we'll have to figure out a way to beef up enforcement, I guess, but it's a topic that needs our attorney as well.
I was just going to say the same thing. It's a topic we're going to have to discuss with our attorney before we take any action because of the, of the points that Juliet has just made. So suggestion is talk to her, but right now we do not know how we would handle that.
Yeah.
When does the ordinance expire?
It already expires. Sorry.
Yeah, expired the twenty-eighth of February.
Juan Carlos is my chair. You, you may want to call our land use director and see if you can set up a, a Zoom call or something, because I know you're in Massachusetts. And trying to match when you're in town, when she's in the office may be difficult.
Good suggestion.
The land director, do I get her contact from the webpage?
Yes. Her, her number's three, two, one, six, so.
Okay.
No, three, two, one, five. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Chat box for you.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right, then we will move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, without objection, the agenda and all attachments and exhibits therein will be made part of the official record. I do not believe there are any pre-application workshops. So we'll move now down to two public hearings, and they are similar. For both public hearings, the process we will follow is that Peter Gardner will present the applications. He's presenting both of them. Juliet Hodge will then provide her planner's comments. Any citizen who wants to comment on the applicant, on each of the applications will have the opportunity to do so on each application, then all members of the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions and request clarifications. When that process is completed, we will close the public hearing. We will have a discussion by the voting members of the commission and take action. So we will do that on each of these public hearings. And each of these is a continuation of a public hearing that was opened at our February meeting. So with that, I will open the continuation of public hearing application, PZ twenty-two dash one, which is a re-subdivision one twenty-five Whalehead Road, Gales Ferry, zero, six, three, three, five. M sixty-three B twenty-six hundred L one twenty-five. The owner is Mark Cohen, five library, Langgalls Ferry. Applicant is Peter Gardner, Dieter and Gardner. This is a one lot re-subdivision zone R forty-three point two zero acres. And as I noted, the public hearing was opened February tenth. Mr. Gardner, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Evening, everybody. A property we're proposing to subdivide is on the south side of Whalehead Road. Street address is one twenty-five. Plans have been submitted to the, to the town, reviewed and approved by Wetlands. Health department has witnessed test pits and signed off on the subdivision. And we are proposing to create a single lot that is the basis for the re-subdivision. Property's been subdivided.
Sounds like you muted yourself, Peter.
It's pretty simple. So if there's any questions or comments, I'd be glad to try to address them. That, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The sheet that's on the screen now is the forty-scale plan. Wetlands on the bottom of the sheet, the southern part of the property. Topography is on the plan with two-foot contours. On the lot on the west side are some, some mobile homes. The property has had a number of deep test pits dug on them, and test holes were very good. And in accordance with the regulations, a strip of land running parallel to Whalehead Road thirty feet from the central line is to be conveyed to the title ledger for potential for future road widening.
Thank you. I know that Peter and Juliet have discussed both of these applications. Juliet, do you have planners' comments on this?
I know this is incredibly simple. The only comment I had had was you, you do have a regulation that says you have to, you know, take advantage of, what is it? Solar, what am I, what am I missing? The solar energy, you know, technique?
Orientation.
Yeah, that one. So I mean, if you look at the house, all I had suggested that it be turned like all of the other ones there to you know, take advantage of that. It's a, it's in your subdivision regulations. I don't know how much you enforce that as a commission, but anyway.
Well, actually Juliet, can I ask a question? What we're actually approving is just the subdivision and the house theoretically could go there, but doesn't have to when they apply for a building permit, right?
Right, but I think it happens to be in your subdivision regs, so.
There, there is something in subdivision regulations, and I think it's a suggestion. But Katie's point's a good one. We're creating a lot, we're not proposing any construction here. And if you ever get around to rethinking your regulations, maybe that's something to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I thought about it, because your septic system's right up close, I wasn't sure if you'd even be able to, but we can discuss that when you come in for the house, I suppose.
Thank you. Are there any questions by members of the commission for Peter Gardner or Julia? If not, without objection, we will close the public hearing. And I add whatever time it is here, I can't say, seven nineteen.
Did you ask for public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there any public comments? Good catch. There are no public comments. There are no questions from the commission, I believe. So I think I've touched all the bases, so without objection, the public hearing is closed. We will now move on to discussion and decision. This is a, this is a simple one, but we do need to provide a brief summary in the, in the record on the reasons for our action, and I, I will ask Katie to provide a very brief summary of the commission's opinion on this. If you will.
Um, if this application has come before us, I think this is the third time. And I think each time the different minor issues have been addressed. We have Ledge Light, a letter of approval from Ledge Light and inland wetlands. The proposal is for a new single-family dwelling lot. I'm not sure what else you want for a summary.
I think you've pretty well covered it. Thank you.
Okay.
And is anyone else on the commission, near the voting members, have any additional comments they would like to add to the record? If not, I will ask Juliet to read the proposed motion that we would be voting on.
I would just add that there were some in, in the motion that I had drafted, there are some you know, standard conditions.
Right.
I didn't know if you're all right with just saying what they are ahead of time, or if you wanted to discuss them at all, or if everybody's okay with what I had suggested.
I believe we're okay with what, what you suggested. They are the standard conditions. So if you could just read it for the record for us, please.
All right, so I'm suggesting a motion to approve application, PZ twenty-two dash one resub for a one lot re-subdivision of a three-point-two acre property located at one twenty-five Whalehead Road, Gales Ferry in Connecticut. Kills Ferry, Connecticut, in the R forty zone, owned by Mark Cohen with the following conditions. Prior to the submission of the milars applicant shall, shall submit the following: a copy of a warranty deed to the town for the thirty-foot road widening strip to be deeded to the town, a draft schedule A, property description of the new lot, and revised description for the existing lot. Which is essentially the same as the next thing, which is required in your subdivision regs. A document detailing all distances and bearings for all property lines and all coordinates based on the state plane coordinate system, or provide a digital file that can be converted to a shape file for the purpose of updating the town GIS and assessor maps. And a surety estimate for all monumentation and soil and erosion control measures. All surety must be in place prior to the issuance of any zoning and or building permits for site work and construction. And then prior to the issuance of a CO for any proposed development certificate of installation of all required monumentation must be provided.
Any member of the commission have any changes they would like to make to that motion? If not, I will ask Katie to make the motion, please.
Okay, I think that was the motion made or motion to, to approve?
Yeah, what you're, all you're doing is moving what Juliet has read into the record.
So moved.
Second, seconded by Paul, is that correct?
Tom.
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? See, no further discussion. We will vote. Katie?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It passes unanimously. We now move to the second, if I get to my screen here. I will now open the continuation of public hearing application, PZ twenty-two dash two. It's a re-subdivision five Lorenz Industrial Parkway. M one thirty-eight, B thirteen eighty, L five, owners Seven Lorenz LLC, forty-nine, forty-one Walnut Street, Hartford, Connecticut. Applicant Peter Gardner of Dieter and Gardner, Gales Ferry for a one lot re-subdivision zone CIP, five point four acres, and this public hearing was also opened February tenth. Mr. Gardner, the floor is yours again.
Evening again. Pete Gardner, representing the developer of Five Lorenz. Five Lorenz is a property that has the old police station on it, which is the center of the first sheet that's in front of us. It's in the CIP zone, and the proposed property is located on the south side of Lorenz Industrial Drive, the west side of Route one seventeen. There's an extensive area wetlands between the developed portion of the property and one seventeen. And the lot we're proposing has been to Wetlands and received their approval and has had test holes dug and witnessed by the health department, which is signed off. And we are within the watershed for the city of Graton. We've notified them by certified mail, and the city has sent over a note saying that we can't connect to the public water. Again, at this time, we're not proposing any construction. We're showing conceptually where a building could go, septic system, et cetera. At this time, no new curb cuts are proposed. We'd be using the existing driveway that serves the old police station to access the house, house site, excuse me, the, the building site on the proposed new lot, which we've called five A. This is interesting parcel for a couple of reasons. One is there's a good-sized ever-source easement going through the property, and when the police station was built, it was built underneath the power lines within the easement area. And again, that's strictly an easement. The power company does not own the land. They don't have any control over access through the property. It, it's been an issue on a previous subdivision I did, but there were other, other things going on there. And we believe we've met all the regulations, and I, I think there was a couple of things that Juliet had concerns with that we've addressed recently. So there are three sheets, excuse me, three sheets to the set of plans. And the second sheet shows all the topography, the wetlands, the test pits, the conceptual building location, parking to serve their commercial use, and more the detail that was on the first sheet, and the last sheet is the property history map. Lorenz Industrial Drive was developed by Ed Lorenz, you know, back in the eighties, and it's turned into a nice little commercial industrial subdivision. And we hope to add to that with the lot we're creating. My client has talked about coming back in shortly with a proposal to build on it. And that will have to come before the commission, where we show all the details for the construction of what he's, what he thinks he's going to put there. And so we're, we're not done with this property. If we get some approval, we'll be back. I hope I've addressed everything that's important, and we can move forward tonight.
Thank you. Juliet comments?
Um, all the, you know, the missing pieces from GU and Ledge Light have been submitted, so that's good. We're in discussion about a slightly different layout for that lot that would pull the building farther away from the wetlands and, you know, maybe be a slightly better design that I hope Peter will be amenable to. But that can come before you when it's time for the site plan itself. I just think it would be a cleaner setup and access and whatnot, but we can address that later, so. Wetland signed off on it, so I don't have any issues.
So it does.
Yeah, the, the conditions I have are again just pretty standard, given the shared driveway aspect and the need for the surety and the deed descriptions or property descriptions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question?
Certainly, sir.
Probably, probably through you, probably for our, our director. I saw the letter from Grattan Utilities that they can supply water. This is in the watershed. Don't we also have, at what point do we have to notify the utility and the Department of Health? Is that just on the site plan, or is that also on subdivision? I don't remember.
They've been notified. I think that's what, Peter, you said you notified them by.
The letter addresses his water, doesn't address, you know, I don't see a letter to DPH and Grattan saying we're in the, obviously rotten operations knows, but I, I don't know. I can't remember, and I don't know, maybe Pete remembers.
Well, we did send certified mail to Grattan Utilities. I, I, I know I submitted a copy of that. I don't have that in front of me now.
Did we, did we go back to DPH also, or no?
I can't remember, Mike.
I wish I could have. I wish I'd noticed that earlier. But even if you missed it, it'd come in with the application for the site plan.
Yes.
Agreed. Are there any citizen comments on this? Are there any comments or questions from members of the commission? Hearing none. Without objection, I will close the public hearing, and we will then open it up to or move on to discussion and decision. Does any member of the, any voting member of the commission wish to make any additional comments at this point?
Can I add something? This is Pete. Um, one of the things that we will be doing here, and I should have mentioned it with previous applications, will be installing the monumentation before we print up the final plans, the milars, so that when it gets recorded in the clerk's office, it shows the shows, calls out all the lock corners and monuments to get set. It's a lot cleaner that way. Having it on a miler before it gets recorded.
I believe that will make the town planner happy.
Well, yeah, we have to talk about that whole process, because you got to work this out so that it.
I understand.
It happens.
Any, any comments by the members of the commission? If not, again, for the record, I will ask this case, Mr. Boudreaux, to briefly summarize our views on this particular application.
We've discussed this a couple of times, a couple of meetings, and application PZ twenty-two dash two resub at five at Lorenz Industrial Parkway. It's covered all the bases, ledge light and all this and that stuff. Not only that, Juliet's happy with it. With that being the case, I move in favor.
I like that.
Juliet's happy.
Juliet's happy. We're generally happy. Any, any other comments or questions for the?
That's, that's actually part of the public record now, right?
Yes, sir. That is, it absolutely is. We, we know we need to keep the planner happy. Keep your staff happy. A happy staff means a happy chairman. I will ask Juliet to, at this point, if there are no other comments, I will ask Julie to read, Julie have to read the proposed motion for the record.
A motion to approve application number PZ twenty-two dash two resub for a one lot re-subdivision of a five-point-zero-four acre property located at five Lorenz Industrial Parkway, Ledger, Connecticut, in the CIP zone owned by Seven Lorenz LLC with the following conditions. Prior to the submission of the milars applicant shall submit the following: a draft of all required shared driveway agreements and access easements for corresponding areas shown on the plan. A draft property description for the new lot and revised description for the existing lot, surety estimate for all driveway improvements, monumentation, soil and erosion control. Surety must be in place prior to the issuance of any zoning and or building permits for site work and construction. A document detailing all distances and bearings for all property lines and or and or all coordinates based on the state plane coordinate system, or provide a digital file that we can, that can be converted to a shape file for the purpose of updating the town GIS and assessor maps. Wetlands and site plan approval will be required for any proposed development, and prior to the issuance. Wetlands and site plan approval will be required for any proposed development and prior to the issuance of a CO for any proposed development certification of installation of all required monumentation must be provided.
I move in favor of the motion.
Second please.
Second by Marty Wood.
But moved in second, is there any further discussion? If not-
Once again, Mike Cherry, if I could interrupt. I know it's a subdivision. I wasn't involved in it, but section three point four of our subdivision regs appears to be not met and we probably ought to comment that that will happen after the fact. Uh, but that's notification to the adjacent town and notification to the Department of Health.
It's, it's not located within five hundred feet of a boundary though.
Is it? It's not that close to Groton?
Is it? I don't think so.
It's just in their watershed, I think.
But it is in the watershed. So I just think, I think all you'd have to do is note that that's following behind and will be done prior to submittal of any site plan.
All right. Well, I don't think it has to go to-
We, we are not within five hundred feet of the adjoining town.
Well, let me, let me-
It requires a notification. We're comfortable with that being a condition.
Yeah, because applicants shall, you know, and it's supposed to be seven days. Must be made within seven days of submittal of the application. I'm, I'm saying, okay. It's more important that they get notified than we worry about the seven days. Make it a condition and move on or table this till next time, which I don't think makes sense.
All right, but, but Mike, it doesn't apply because it's not within five hundred feet. So all of that is-
Reads paragraph two. If any portion of the proposed development falls within the watershed boundary, the applicant shall notify Groton Utilities and State Department of Public Health.
Yeah, I believe Peter, you did said that you sent something to Groton Utilities about the watershed. Did you not or?
I did. I sent him certified mail. And I gave a copy of it to, I submitted a copy of that notification with the paperwork that went in with this application.
All right. So I will make sure that that does, that has happened or that it's part of our record.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
An acceptable to view, Tom, since you made the motion. I assume it is. All right. Are we now ready to vote? I believe we are. Um, Katie?
Sorry, were all the conditions included already in the motion? Okay. Yes. I vote yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that ends that agenda item. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. See you sometime soon, we expect. All right. We'll now move on to old business and item A is the request to initiate step one of uh, the opt-out procedure for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-nine. Uh, this is a carryover from the February meeting. There is, uh, tonight, no action I'm here. Uh, but there is the opportunity to discuss this, uh, and I, I have a couple of preliminary comments on this. As I've noted, Eric and I do not agree on, uh, whether the, whether the statute we somehow requires us to hold a public hearing because the statute is a zoning change, the, the state has a right to, um, impose conditions. Nevertheless, I, I think we need, we do need to discuss it. I am not a I'm not a, in favor of holding public hearings simply for the sake of public hearings. I also believe that if we are going to hold a public hearing on whether to opt out, we need to specify what we want the public hearing to be on. Mr. Treaser has, Eric has stated, one of the things he, he does not believe that detached ADU should be allowed. And twenty-one, twenty-nine allows them. So that is certainly one item that, that we should discuss. There were some other elements of twenty-one, twenty-nine that I think, um, might be worthy of discussion. The, the question I believe is, uh, since twenty-one, twenty-nine, the two sections of it, and by the way, it would require two different public hearings. Because there's the, the section dealing specifically with ADUs and there's the section dealing with parking. Each of those is covered separately in twenty-one, twenty-nine, so there would have to be two votes. Uh, there would have to be two public hearings. But, uh, I believe the question is, can we develop ADU regulations that meet the specifications of twenty-one, twenty-nine that we find acceptable? If we can, then, and we go through the process of adopting those regulations, that renders the need to hold a public hearing on twenty-one, twenty-nine moot. If we cannot, then we, we have to then go back and look at twenty-one, twenty-nine and decide whether or not to opt out. They're not mutually exclusive. Um, we could find ourselves right back where we are now, which is we do have section eight one, which allows ADUs and that would be the default. Juliet has drafted a, a possible, or I don't say it's proposed, not proposed yet, the proposal that we got. But an ADU modification to section eight point one. Uh, do you have the ability to put that up, to share that? Or I sent it out to everybody. Has everybody seen it? Eric has not. I did send it out. It's on the agenda.
Can you not see it on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
See if we can get it up on the screen.
It is. I'm seeing it.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm, I, I'm seeing it too. You have to, I think you, if you don't, if you can't see it, what you have to do is, um, knock your view down from full screen. And if you do that, can people see it? I can see it if I knock my view down. And she's scrolling.
I can see it.
Okay.
Eric, can you see it?
I cannot, but I'll get ahold of a copy later on.
Okay. Um-
It's on the agenda item. I mean, if you-
It's on the agenda item too. It's on, it's under the agenda. So if you want to download it from there, you can. Uh, let me bring this up. Juliet, if you want to, um, briefly, I knocked, I just lost my other screen here. If you want to briefly, um, go through this and point out what, uh, changes would be made as a result of twenty-one, twenty-nine?
Right. So you already have an accessory, um, apartment regulation allowing it to be attached. So I didn't, I didn't mess with any of that. Only still only allowing one per parcel. The, the, I think what I did was listen to some of the concerns and I think most of them can be addressed in this regulation. So the first thing uh, that will be required is that it has to have the acreage of the underlying zone if it's detached. So it can't be a non-conforming lot. So it can't be an undersized lot in that zone. And then there's size restriction. So the statute allows thirty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling unit, not including finished basements, decks and detached accessory structures. So that, that cuts down the size right there with a maximum of, um, a thousand square feet. Uh, and then I'll talk about a, a couple of exceptions in there, but so know right off the bat that it can only be a maximum of a thousand square feet and that would be somebody with a three thousand plus square foot house would be able to get something like that. Majority of your houses, um, are not that big. And I gave you a little chart, I think, the last time to, to show you that. So the other change that I hope will satisfy some of Eric's concerns. So there was some concern that people could drop a mobile home in the backyard. First of all, it has to comply with health code, building code and all that sort of thing. It has to comply with all your setbacks. Um, it has to comply with your lot coverage rules, you know, all of those things are still the tools you have to control this. So I specifically have put in here and I think it still complies with the statute. It says, you know, it, the accessory dwelling unit that you're putting in the backyard can't be one of those granny pods that you did opt out of. So it can't be a trailer, uh, an RV. Don't scroll so far and fancy, just keep it right there. Uh, it can't be a, a, an RV, a travel trailer or a mobile home. Except that mobile homes that have their narrowest dimension of twenty-two, uh, twenty-two feet can be used as an accessory dwelling unit and that's per the statute. So I did want to call out specifically that, you know, mobile homes that were less than that double wide width weren't allowed. And I think that still meets the statute. So you know, housing is something we need. I feel strongly about that for sure, but you know, this is a good way of adding some units without, uh, adding to sprawl. And we did do a little research today to see how many accessory dwelling units were applied for and approved after you made the change. I guess, I don't remember what year it was. I think it was twenty eighteen. There was a change made and there were only four. So I promise you're not going to be overrun with ADUs. They're still incredibly expensive to put in. You have to tie into your septic if your septic can handle it. Um, you may not, you may have to put in your own, uh, separate, um, septic system. So it's not, it's not easy. Um, the one exception I would suggest because I, most of your ADUs are going to land in a garage or above a garage. That seems to be the trend. And so some garages are bigger than a thousand square feet, but so you can, you are allowed to, to increase the size past a thousand if you want to. Um, and I also give a little, um, so I, I said you could go up to twelve hundred square feet if it's above an existing, you know, a garage. And then if you have a very small house and you still want an ADU, I think the, and that, the maximum, you can increase the size of your apartment to four hundred and twenty square feet, but I don't even think I think building code is bigger than that. So I'm not sure how that's going to work in the statute, but you know, I said that they could come up to at least four hundred and twenty square feet. I might have to bump that up to five hundred and twenty if that's the building code. For some reason, I thought four twenty, so.
May I please interject a, a quick question? I'm sort of a layman type of question, Juliet or, or anybody?
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, for, for asking the very obvious. But what they is, um, because I, I have heard from other people um, besides, uh, Mr. Treaster's, uh, statements. And so there's controversy. So just like in, in layman's terms, what would you say the biggest uh, concern is that, you know, uh-oh, if, if, if this goes through, then, um, then Ledger is, is going to be totally different. I mean, in my mind, um, I think Ledger is, is enjoyable and, and beautiful, um, including, including the homes and also the businesses. So, so how would we just say succinctly in, in layman's terms, you know, why there's such controversy? And I apologize. It's like a, a really, uh, basic question, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. Thanks.
I mean, I, I don't understand. I have no idea why it's a controversy. They're, they're, they're pretty benign and will end up being pretty small and people can have sheds anyway and other things in their backyards and, and their on their properties. I mean, you as a planning and zoning commission can determine that building envelope and lock coverage and you have some tools, but it's their property. So we can't regulate ugly.
If I could, Juliet?
Yes, please.
Uh, you know, Juliet mentioned earlier that, that we went and looked at what happened from January twenty nineteen to date, based on our change from in-law apartments to accessory apartments. And that was going to change Ledger. We never should have done it. It was terrible. And we found that we get about one a year. One of them's in my neighborhood and if I didn't know what the house looked like before they added it, I wouldn't even recognize it. There's another one in Marty's neighborhood. I won't say where. But unless, unless you're a land use geek, you wouldn't recognize that, oh, that had an accessory apartment added. It, it's, it's, uh, the, the, the real question in my mind is if we, if we opt out now, what's our end game? What do we propose? What are we going to do? I think the end game is you develop a set of regulations that meets what the town needs that meets the state statute. And you adopt those. And I think what Juliet's proposing for your consideration does that. And, and you're not going to see a change in Ledger. It's, it's Jim, the, the argument always is change is bad. And what's, what are the unintended consequences of our changes? The unintended consequence of this change is really intended and that's to provide more affordable, smaller housing for those that desire it. And when you look at the restrictions that we've, that Juliet's built in, these can't go everywhere. I mean, you know, in my short six or seven months acting as CEO, I find that our regulations are severely restrictive to any existing lot, either in front setback, side setback or bulk area. So in order to meet all the setbacks, treat it just like a home and have a full-size lot, there's very few places you can put these. Um, and it costs a lot of money. I mean, I don't know, the commission should remember when we looked at granny pods and decided to opt out of that, that ordinance was fatally flawed because you could only use it while your in-law was, uh, disabled and living there. And if they passed or if they moved on, you had to get rid of it. So it was, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of investments with no return when you couldn't use it anymore. So, uh, it's change is bad, Jim. That's, that's, that's what's scaring everybody.
And you already allow them. So it's, it's not a density issue because you already allow accessory units. It's a matter of whether they're inside of the house or outside of the house. You're not changing the, the density or the, the character of that neighborhood, I don't think. And you can't even consider the character anymore. So that's moot.
And when you consider the infrastructure, it gets really hard to position these things, uh, especially in our town, which is mostly wells and septic.
I think the, the, the way we work these out is that, at least my, the way I think we've worked this out is we, we go ahead and go through the process. We propose this regulation. We hold a public hearing on it. Yep. Uh, that is the point which, uh, objections can be raised to, uh, by extension to what's in twenty-one, twenty-nine. If we, Eric can certainly raise his objection to these being detached. Uh, we can decide whether or not that's a valid exact, uh, uh, objection. If it is, then we're going to have to opt out of twenty-one, twenty-nine. If we decide that as a commission, we think detached ADUs are all right, just like sheds are all right, then we stay in. But I, I'm not in favor personally of, uh, voting to opt out of twenty-one, twenty-nine now. And it would take four votes to do so. Then holding a public hearing on opting out of twenty-one, twenty-nine. At that point, probably maybe deciding we're not going to opt out and be right back where we are now, which is proposing regulations. I think we should propose the regulations. Act on them. If we do not adopt those regulations, that's when we move to the issue of opting out. That's just my opinion as chairman of the commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you're right. You got a set of proposed regulations and through the process of accepting any new regulation, it gets modified till it meets the commission's requirements and you have a set of regulations you can use for auxiliary dwelling units. And I don't understand why other towns opt out rather than going through the process of adopting the regulation. So I think you're spot on.
I'd ask for comments from other members of the, of the commission, pretty much on this issue. Do you think we should have a vote to opt out now? And we have to take, it would take four votes. Or should we proceed with these? Uh, I'll ask the commission first and then Eric.
Thanks for answering that, by the way.
This is Katie. I, I agree with you, Tony. I'm not in favor of opting out. Um, I've always thought we should have allowed detached accessory dwelling units. And when I moved here like ten years ago, I was surprised that they were not allowed. Not that I was going to put one in. I couldn't afford it, but I was still surprised. Uh, and we've had people come before the commission in the public comment section in the beginning asking, hey, can we do this? How are we going to do this? I'd love to do it. And we've always just told them, well, it's really impossible. And I've found that kind of shocking. So that's my opinion.
I agree with the, I agree with the commission's approach in that, uh, we should look and see what, uh, what changes need to be made to the existing code. And then pro, proceed in a standard procedure in doing that. And I recall as Katie does, uh, we, we've had come before- And then pro- proceed in a standard procedure in doing that. And I recall as Katie does, uh, we, we've had come before us, uh, um, auxiliary housing units that were detached. And we said that is not allowed. In fact, when we revised everything in the late of twenty eighteen, we really struggled with, uh, how to accommodate auxiliary housing units. And we opted to save with the attached and not allow detached. So I'm in agreement with the process that our chair has proposed.
Mr. Boudreaux.
I'm certainly in favor of going ahead with it. Uh, we need, uh, have a public hearing and talk about it, but I think this is a good thing to do and a right thing to do. And when you talk about change, when I was a kid, this was a town of eighteen hundred people. We've seen a lot of change, most of it for the better. Keep going.
Paul, do you have a comment? And then we'll get to Eric.
Oh, I can curl with everybody's, uh, comments so far. Thanks.
Um, Jim, are you good with that? You're not a voting member, but.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, yeah. I, I appreciate everyone's perspective. I, I think I have a, a handle on now what, you know, what the controversy is. Thanks.
On to Eric.
Uh, I, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt here. Uh, I, I respectfully disagree with, with one little thing that you said, and that is you, you, you have to decide that you're going to opt out before you conduct the public hearing. That, that's not, that's not my reading of the statute. My reading of the statute is you vote, you, you schedule the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, you vote to opt out or not to opt out. And that's what makes it identical or essentially identical to a, an ordinary reg change. So, so you, so, so just scheduling the public hearing does not mean you are predetermined to opt out. It, it, it only means that you're, you've decided to have a public hearing because you want public input on, on a formal basis. Uh, what, what you may want, what, what you might want to consider is doing it in parallel. Uh, come, uh, develop the regs that, that you want. My, my argument is that if you opt out, you have more flexibility in developing exactly the regs that you want. Uh, uh, and, and, and I value flexibility, but you have to, but you have to opt out in order to do everything you want to do.
Why, why, Eric? Why can't you go through that process when you have a, a, um, a potential reg in front of you and you have a public hearing and then the commission can make those changes there?
Uh, but let's take for example that the minimum size requirement, uh, let, now, a- as you know, I, I tend to push the, the, the three sigma case a little aggressively, but I've learned over the years that if you, if it works in, in extreme cases, it'll work for ordinary cases better. So, so let's assume that someone has a, um, a, a, a nine hundred square foot mobile home, one of the pre-existing mobile homes in Ledger on, on one of the old, the old lot, you know, one of the, uh, non-conforming lots. And, uh, they decided they want to put in a, another home in the back. The, uh, uh, another dwelling in the back of that, of that, uh, forty-year-old mobile home. And, uh, the, the, the way the statute is worded, it can be, let, let's say the mobile home is nine hundred and forty square feet, which would be fourteen by sixty-six.
Uh, can't pay.
That, 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 the, the way this, the way the statute is worded right now is that that person would be allowed to have a three hundred square foot, a one, one-third, three hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit uh, in the backyard. Uh, Juliette and I disagree on a little bit. She, 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 she thinks it can go anywhere on the building lot, but I believe, I believe we can limit it to the backyard. Uh, uh, but, but that's okay. But a three hundred square foot home, a, a three, three hundred square foot tiny home uh, behind a nine hundred and forty square foot trailer, uh, is, is not something that I think we should encourage in ledgered. And if you, if you adopt a change that says that the minimum size will be four hundred square feet, a- as you, as you just got through suggesting, that will be a direct conflict with the statute, which, which says it shall not be more than one-third for the minimum size. So, so I could be wrong. You know, I, I've made mistakes before, but these things require some, some thinking and, uh, 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 so, so the, m- m- my, my argument is that, uh, schedule a public hearing. Let's see what happens. You're not under any obligation to opt out just because you conduct the public hearing. Absolutely none whatsoever. It takes, it, it, but the, the statute's a little unusual because it requires a vote in order to schedule the public hearing. But that vote does not imply predetermination in any way, shape or form. Conduct the public hearing. Now you are required to vote. And now, now the vote is either for, is either to opt out or not to opt out. Uh, and in the process of making that decision, we can consider, uh, uh, alternatives. We can do, we can, we can, we can do other things. So, uh, that's, that's just my concern. Scheduling the public hearing does no harm. And, 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 and it treats this tw- the, the, the act as, which it, which it basically it is down deep. It's a proposed reg change. Let's, let's treat it as such. Thank you.
I think the, uh, I, I believe that the, the view of the commission is that holding, proceeding as we've suggested and holding a public hearing on the proposed regulation is in fact holding a public hearing. Uh, that would not, notwithstanding, um, you can read the tea leaves as well as I can. There are not four votes on this commission to hold a public hearing on opting out of twenty-one, twenty-nine. And that's what the, the regulation requires four votes. To hold a public hearing. There are not four votes on this commission at this point to hold that public hearing.
Uh, the, I, I, I don't know. We haven't voted, but, but in any case, uh, as a commission, you have the right to conduct a public hearing on any subject.
We certainly do. We just, I, I think the commission seems unanimous. At this point, we do not want to hold a public hearing on opting out of twenty-one, twenty-nine.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that, on this?
I.
If not my suggestion, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, the, the only thing I think I'll just kind of throw in there is a couple of things that Eric brought up in that example. Um, first of all, he said it would be a, it was an existing non-conforming, which we've already kind of gotten a line item here that'll handle that, that it has to be, uh, on a conforming lot. So that, that lot would be ineligible based on that requirement. And then the other one, we wouldn't necessarily be in conflict because if the statute says it's by right minimum and we allow more, um, we would be okay in that particular case, not saying there's not other cases that could come up. But anyway, that's, that's all.
My suggestion is that we put this on the agenda for next month at, that Juliet will then, I think the process Juliet is we, we formally propose it next month and then we schedule a public hearing. Is that how this works?
I'd have to submit an application.
Right.
And then you accept it and, and, uh,
And then schedule a public hearing. So the.
Yeah, I, I would point out that, uh, there's some other bigger changes, you know, about to be proposed as well. Um, and some of them also have to do with this statute. You, you've got a few things you have to deal with on, on a time scale. So,
Yep.
Um, I'm fine with doing ADUs separately, but I just don't want to lose, um, lose too much time on the others because some of them.
I agree. We want to move on this and we want to move on this in a, in an expeditious manner.
Right.
Everybody good with that? All right. Then we move to the, uh, the next item, which is a discussion, uh, under new business discussion, the potential changes to existential, existing dimensional requirements. Julie's been working, Julie has been working on this one. And I was in her office with, with Mike, uh, Mike's office actually yesterday, I guess, going over these. So I'm going to pass this on to Juliette too. This is part of the broader, um, uh, re- not so much rewrite, but reorganization of our regs, which is badly needed. Uh, and so I'll turn this over to Juliette.
All right. Nancy, can you stop your share? Thank you. All right. And bear with me because I'm having some difficulties. Hopefully this will work. All right. Can you still hear me?
Yes. Yes, but your Zoom screen is blocking your, uh, document.
Here we go.
All right.
Now you're good.
I just want to try to get a little bigger. All right. Um, so part of, so I have been working on these, the rewrites. There are sections of this that, you know, I definitely want your input and I don't have some of the history. I've been working a lot with Mike Cherry. So I, I, you know, I do have some of the history. So I've come across some issues with your definitions that were very confusing to me and, uh, your dimensional requirements that didn't make sense to me. And, and I'll explain why they don't. So the first thing I noticed is that you had three sets of definitions dealing with basically dealing with setbacks and boundary lines and things like that. And I found them to be a little confusing. So I think it's because you do have a regulation that talks about not allowing accessory um, structures in a front yard. But the way you're defining front yard in your regs right now, these are not your current definitions. Um, it, the, the definition's wrong. It actually, I mean, Eric, if you read it grammatically, we actually do allow uh, accessory structures in the front yard area because the way you had defined it, uh, it didn't exclude the setback. So it was, you just couldn't put it in the front yard setback. But that aside, I think it's clear to just stick to, everybody knows what a property line is. I don't even think you need to put a, a definition in, but I suggest that you get rid of all of these and you just go with what is the building line? What do you mean by that? Cause you do use that several places. Um, you can put in what the, the frontage line, that's sort of redundant. I don't care either way on that one, but just define front yard setback, rear yard setback and, um, side yard setbacks. Cause that's what you're, you're ultimately doing. Your tool here is what is the building envelope that makes sense for lots in this zone and has to be the same, you know, um, setbacks obviously per zone. And, and deal with that, figure that out. Think about all of the things that can occur on a lot. What do we allow? What are the, some of the uses that are allowed? What would some of the uses be? You know, conceivably on a particular property. What do the properties in that zone currently look like? You know, where are the houses right now? Um, because you'll find that a lot of the houses in town were built in the sixties and all of those are of course right up closer to the road. Um, so, uh, we've been, everybody in the office has been like talking about this and looking at various houses and various subdivisions and good design and bad design. And so the first thing you need to do is figure out these setbacks. What makes sense for a property with the possibility of an ADU going in the front yard? Did you want to make those front setbacks bigger? Um, did you want to make the lot coverage smaller to further discourage that? I do feel zoning has an obligation to, uh, protect property values. But that also means allowing people to invest in their property and to put sheds and things and pools on their properties because you want them to, because you can then tax them. This is, this is a good thing. If somebody invests in their property and adds to their property, you want to be able to allow those nineteen sixties houses to, I don't know, redo their front porch or close in their front porch. And they can't right now because they're in the setback area. So think about everything that could occur. Um, the other thing I think is, uh, very much missing from your zoning regs, you, you sort of touch on it in your subdivision regs by defining unbuildable area. But nowhere did you define sort of a buildable area or require that a lot have, you know, a very specific buildable area. What you require in subdivision is that, um, seventy-five percent of a lot, a new lot has to be a contiguous, non-wetland area or something to that effect. I don't think that's enough to just call out wetlands. Um, I think you have a lot of subdivisions, one that was just passed that is really bad design. And I think part of it is because there are no regulations in place to stop that bad design. So I am proposing that you add a, a definition for buildable area. And so that means if it's, if there's a road there, if there's a right of way across the property, if there's an easement or a conservation easement, a flood zone, wetlands, obviously a body of water, a river, you know, all of those types of things don't count towards buildable area. And that you require that seventy-five percent of that land, the lot that they're, that you're proposing to build on has to have seventy-five percent contiguous buildable area. Now that's, that's a change. That is a big change because you didn't call out all those other things. So when you allow those driveways to, to crisscross people's properties, and we'll get to that a little bit later too, because I hope that goes away. You know, or you, you do those access easements for shared driveways, you know, you, when you, when you cut an eight, a, a lot in half, you're, you're essentially taking away the use of that other side of that driveway or road. I mean, nobody's going to put the swing set over there if they don't know that, you know, who's coming up and down the road. So I think you need to be, and it, and you talk about protecting view sheds and, and, um, the water resources, you have a huge reservoir through the center of your town. You should be better about protecting some of these natural resources. And I think lots should have a big area that's suitable for development. Now you can play with that number seventy-five. I just picked it because that's what you had for the other. Um, so I think it's important to identify what's buildable. You guys set what amount of it has to be contiguous buildable. And I think this will really force some, you know, better designed subdivisions. Um, and then keep that lot width as well, because that's another, another tool. So there can be flexibility here's. Um, you know, if I say the land has to have seventy-five percent contiguous buildable area, um, then we have to be careful when we talk about, and I'm going to skip to the dimensionals. Then we have to be careful when we talk about these setbacks and lot frontage and, and, and whatnot because and lot coverage, because we wanted them to be able to, you know, build something. So where that buildable area really comes in, um, is in your conservation subdivisions and open space subdivisions, probably more so than a traditional subdivision because, um, you're trying to create a very specific pattern, you know, clustered lots around some protected open space. And, um, so that's when I was really playing with those, what could be included, what can't. And I'm hoping that that will force the lots away from the natural resources in the area that you would want to protect as your open space. And, you know, keep it away from it. So, um, so the document you got, I, I did the red line version up top and then the cleaned up version on the bottom, just because it's hard to read the red line. So the first thing I noticed is that your lot frontages are it, it very, way, way too small and none, most of your lots aren't that, you know, have much more frontage than that. Most lots have a hundred and fifty to four hundred feet of frontage. I mean, it seems like, but if you go through your town, it, it really, this a hundred, a hundred and fifty and two hundred really reflects more of what you actually have.
So does that eliminate like flag lot issues?
No, because this is for frontage lots. So let me, you know, so down here you have interior lots and frontage lots.
Uh, okay.
So even your frontage lots. So I mean, you had a fifty-foot, that's what most rear lots should be, but, um, that's too small. That's going to, you know, so if a developer has this piece of parcel and they're going to want to get as many lots out of that as possible, even if the lots are horrible. You know, because they figure somebody could at least put a trailer on it and, or whatever, a small house and they'll still get money, right? So if you allow them that crazy design of fifty feet, you're going to get these crazy subdivisions, which you have. And I've seen them and they're, they just amaze me. I went over a few with Mike today. I'm thinking, how did this happen? So what you're trying to do, if you, if you, you know, Google good subdivision of a design or something like that, you have nice, you know, neat parcels. And when you get to a cul-de-sac, they look angled like, you know, as they go around the circle. Except the leisure, you have these strips that go off, you know, to nowhere and, and deeded rights of way for future development that somehow is creating frontage for a rear lot. I mean, I've been, I, I don't even know how some of the things happen, but I think what I'm trying to say is you, you want to force that more uh, uniform lot size, which you, you call out, you, you say it somewhere that, that irregular lot sizes are discouraged or, or shall be avoided. It was even a shall. Yet they're, they're everywhere. So this is an attempt to make sure there's enough frontage and right up to the lot width. So it, that whole front is uniform. If it's a hundred foot frontage, it's got to be a hundred feet lot width at the point that you're going to put your house. There's some, obviously if it's a cul-de-sac, then that, that lot width has to be achieved at the point you actually put your building. So that might be beyond your, your front setback. Lot coverages for your residential zones were fine. Um, that combined side yard, maybe somebody can tell me why that's important. You don't see that very much anymore. I just split the difference for, for the most part. Um, an R twenty lot is a very small lot. Anything more than, you know, ten is, is a lot. Uh, rear yard, I kept the same there. So you can see some of the changes I made. I, I don't like that state road, town road difference, especially, you know, I don't think it's a good practice. you know, I don't think it's a good practice to have the same setback per zone. You, you gotta think about again, what, how big are those lots? How much land are you taking on an R twenty lot if you're going to insist on fifty feet in the front office, off a state road? It's, let them decide where they want to put their house. If they're on a state road, they'll probably push it back anyway. So um, but forcing that is a little much. Interior lot, same thing. You're, you're it, these numbers didn't jive with, with some of the things you required in subdivision. So if rights of way for access have to be twenty-five feet wide, then you can't have twenty-foot frontage requirement on an interior lot. That doesn't work. So the, at the absolute minimum, a, a residential access strip should be is twenty-five, because that allows for a driveway, a little flexibility of where the driveway can be in case you hit the rock of ages. And then allow for, for snow stacking. Um, so and this is mainly just for you to, for me to explain, and then you can look at it. We can talk about it, you know, next month. That's fine too, but so those are some changes there. And along with the changes in residential, this is another thing that Mike and I and Tony spent some time talking about. So the goal is to, you know, we, I looked at uh what kind of variances were being given. And so if you notice the same variance being given over and over again, that's a signal to immediate, you know, to figure out what's wrong in the regulation. So like I said, you have a lot of properties that have houses that were built in the sixties, which are almost always close to the road. And then you went through in, I'm not sure what year, twenty fourteen, maybe. I don't remember where you, you fixed some of the zoning, you, you changed the zone to better sit, uh, suit the property or something. So you've created some non-conformities. So I was thinking about for all those existing residences that sit too close to the road, you know, they don't have the opportunity to uh, you know, add a carport or a garage or to um, you know, expand vertically. They're hampered, right? So what we came up with is that for a house like that, so they've, they've existed, you know, um, they're on legal lots of record after the adoption of subdivision. So there was a subdivision that, that governed it. Wherever their front primary structure is, becomes the new frontline, the, the new front setback. So you're not punishing them, you're not giving them anymore. So wherever their house is, that is now their front yard setback. So if they want to put a garage to the side or they want to put a shed to the side, they can.
The, the way I've heard that worded is you just can't increase a non-conformity. You can't, um, you know, you're allowed to have up to what you already have, but you can't uh worsen and already.
Right. So if, if that house was entirely in the front setback and you wanted to put a garage right to the side, you couldn't, because that garage would be in the front setback and that would increase the non-conformity. So you have to reset that line, which is, you know, they go to the ZBA and ZBA says yes, anyway.
And, and we tried to do this in twenty eighteen, you know, it's just, yeah, Tony and I and Julia were pulling our hair out going, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but, because the object is if everyone looks the same, you don't meet the requirement for a variance, because it's not unique. So if it's not unique, how do we rewrite the regs? And this is the, the best rewrite I've seen or talked about in a decade on how do we solve our existing problem?
And, and the other existing, the other problem you have are existing vacant parcels um, in a residential zone that are created prior to subdivision. So they're not protected by that rule of subdivision like, that if it was created by a subdivision, um, and it hasn't been developed, they can, the, when they do go to develop, they can go by the setbacks at the time the subdivision was adopted. Um, so I'm talking about parcels that don't fall under that. They are lots of record that were created before subdivision, but they're obviously way too small. And I, there's a couple neighborhoods that I, I saw that, that this occurs in. I thought, well, how do we solve that? And I came up with this idea of thinking about the actual lot size. So regardless of which zone it is, how big is the lot? You know, so if your lot is under twenty thousand square feet, then these setbacks apply that, that are more consistent with that sized lot. So I, I, you know, there was no way to sort of solve it per zone, but this is a way to solve it per lot size. And it, I mean, it doesn't give them much of a break, but it's, it's something. Um, it's, it's only about a matter of like five or ten feet, but um, this is what we came up with for that. And then your commercials. All right. So I read in, obviously all regulations, rewrites and things like that. I have to go back to the P O C D and see what you've said for goals and try to uh, see if I could figure out a vision, whatnot. And I don't think everybody in Ledgerd is keen on sprawl. Yet your regulations seem to insist it, insist upon it. So when you, I know what you were trying to do with the village district and you're trying to create something out of an area that was already you know, developed in a lot of respects, especially in the Gales Ferry area. And that doesn't, it doesn't really work. So I think it's very dangerous not to identify. Um, and I don't even think you can really not identify. Uh, you need to identify how big a, a minimum lot area is and, and the height and things like that, because people have a right to know what can happen next to them. Right? That, there's that rule that everything has to be uniform. You have to know what, what can happen beside you. So being too loosey-goosey about that kind of thing, I think is, is dangerous, because you can't really, you can't really anticipate what's going to happen there. So I put the, I'm not married to these numbers at all, because I still think they're way too small. But I wanted to start somewhere. A twenty-five foot frontage in a commercial zone is insane. It's, it's insane. That's not even, I mean, the two-way driveway has to be twenty-four feet. So you can't even like stack snow. That's, that's chopping it up into tiny little pieces along a frontage. I don't think you would want that. So if sewers come down, you know, come into the ledger design district, that would be possible. You could get all these chopped up tiny little lots. So you want to be very careful before that happens to make sure that those lots have a proper frontage um, and proper lot size and, and setbacks and whatnot. Because you always have the opportunity to do the um consolidated parcel type of development where you can consider three parcels together with respect to access and parking. So you, you can do that anyway. But individually, they should spell out, you know, what's supposed to happen. You should, and you didn't require any side yard setbacks either. Well, the fire department's got to get around this building too. So that's too, that, that doesn't work. So I would strongly suggest that you think about it, you know, take what I've done and you can come up with something different, but this is about as small as I would go for any of these lots in your um, in your design districts. I don't have a, a lot of feeling about the R C C D district, because I don't think much could happen there anyway, because it's mainly Mash and Tuckett, but so I didn't spend a lot of time there. And then for your attempts at, I noticed that when you made the village districts, you were trying to push the buildings towards the road and the parking in the back. So one thing you could consider is a maximum front yard setback, you know, versus a minimum or in addition to. Um, but again, remember some of these uses, you, you require buffers, you require landscaping, you want sidewalks. So you can't have a, you know, like the zero setback, because then you're not going to get any of those things necessarily. So uh, you talk about buffering multifamily from surrounding uses. So you have to have, you know, some area to do that in. So um, I gave you some suggestions. I thought your lot coverages were also extremely generous, way high, you know. I don't think you want to see the seas of parking lots. You want to give yourself a chance to, to force some green space in your commercial districts. So I dropped these down considerably. Um, I would even personally go lower, but uh, you don't want to end up where they're going to cram as many buildings and parking lots on this area and give you this tiny little ten-foot strip of uh, you know, grass or something. So give yourself some room to, to get good design. And then same thing in your industrial districts. Frontage is way too small, lot coverage is way too high, because these are some nuisance uses, some uses that you may not want. Uh, totally covering your land that's right on top of your reservoir, for example. The frontage, especially the interior lot frontages were too small. These are, these are trucks coming and going. They have to be, it has to be wider, even for interior lots. I, you know, you had twenty feet. That's again, not even the width of a, of the required commercial driveway that would have to go there. Certainly not enough for a truck. I think fifty is still too small, but I'll leave that up to you guys. So that's what I've been playing with. Now conservation subdivisions and open space subdivision, here's where you get the disastrous designs because of the way um, you're very generous with, with these. Um, but it's, I don't think it's getting you to what I think you wanted. You know, what I am seeing in your, in the diagrams and the, and with the discussions with Mike, you know, if you were picturing clustered around a decent open space, you're not getting there. So this we might have to spend some time on. I did, I did put open space subdivisions back in the R forty zone, because I couldn't figure out why they weren't there. I mean, if you have, you have, if you have forty acres, you have forty acres. But I don't, I don't know why you wouldn't allow them, but you could take that out. Then special interior lot. So these subdivisions, it looked like, we looked at a few today. It looked like at some point you allowed lots to be created off of, with frontage off of driveways. I don't know how. But I think it had to do with the special interior lot, that they didn't have to have any frontage or something, but I think we should think about that and have a discussion about that, because uh, that can again, lead to some crazy design and driveways cutting all over the place. So one thing you could consider is um, you know, having a maximum number of these special interior lots. You already fixed it a little bit by saying you can't stack, stack interior lots. Um, but you need to think about this, take this, you know, back home and look at it and, and think about it, because the way it's written now, you're ending up with that thirty-four Village Lane type of design where you've got li, these little tiny strips leading up and, and a driveway crossing those two strips to get to another one. And I'm going to stop the share to see if I can share this other thing to, to show you what I'm talking about. Did that go away? Did my screen go away? Okay, let me just get this other one then. We got it to work once. Let me try it again. No, this may not work. Let me know if you can't hear me in a second.
Still hearing you.
This is difficult, because you can't hear me when I start.
Is it a video or something?
No, it's my computer being on tonight. I'm going to try it again this other way that I did it before and it kind of worked.
Why she's bringing that up, everybody remember the, the shake and bake commercial where the little girl said, and I helped. Look at this terrible design, just remember, I helped.
I think this is long overdue. This is fantastic.
And, and it was embarrassing as she's sitting there saying, okay, you were the chair. How the heck did you guys do this? I don't know.
It was bad. Can you see it at all?
Yes, half a screen. So if you make it bigger and, and
What about that?
There you go.
That's great.
And you can hear me still?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. This is my favorite. So far. And I don't know what is going on here, but okay, the green is your open space that's cut in two by these two strips. And I'll show you the, the over the, you know, the aerial view in a second. And then you have this, the, you know, your cul-de-sac, some other random strip going off. And then this is a town, you know, deeded to the town, maybe it's a road, I'm not sure, but it's apparently giving frontage to this lot, because there's no other frontage. And it's clearly not enough frontage. And then a tiny little bit of frontage off of it for this lot, but then we have this other eleven-foot strip coming down and going, I have no idea what that is. So that's what it kind of looks like. See, it's giving itself twenty-five feet of frontage, which is not enough for a frontage or an interior lot. Maybe if you added it to that, I don't know, and a little twenty-three foot strip here, it uh, and then we actually see it. Um, if you can see my cursor, so these two strips off of here that cross over the open space, the driveway starts on this guy and then suddenly crosses to the other one and then branches off from there over that open space. And here too, on the bottom. Maybe that's a road. I really don't know. And it goes off again, splitting over these two little strange areas and then branches off to another house down farther. This is poster child bad design. No. Uh, here's another great one that we don't like odd shaped lots. What is this lot? And what, I don't know. And, and this lot that comes, it has frontage over here, does this strange jog that nobody would get to, and then fronts over on this lot too.
It doesn't touch it.
Yeah, not quite. Yeah. Wow. Uh, Applewood, another beautiful stacked, stacked, not the, this is twenty twenty, this only has ten, it looks like. I, I don't know how that guy's getting to his house through a ten-foot driveway, if it requires a twelve-foot driveway, but
Nah, that was a, uh, open space access walkway.
Well, you just walk. Okay, but that's not a lot. You, you can't approve a lot like that. That doesn't mean front.
That means maintenance can't get back there and maintain the
Or an ambulance if somebody gets hurt. You know, you gotta always think a, uh, access. This one, what? I mean, is he a golfer? Like who created that?
Just don't ever leave us and take this and present it anywhere and talk about that.
I gotta go scratch my signatures on those, those subdivision plots.
I mean, look at this lot. What is that?
Open space.
Well, there are, there are conservation easements over here, but I don't know, so why did they have to have frontage? If it was conservation easement, then nobody can walk on anyway. Chop it off and just make that open space.
Is that part in the middle of the driveway that cuts the other lot in half?
This from here up is nothing. It's all wetlands and, and, and conservation easement. But you gave these lots frontage up here with no ability to cross, you know, no ability to ever have a driveway.
Oh, I know. Now I recognize that. That's Colonel Ledyard Highway and uh,
Right in the corner.
Yeah, because, because those lots, nobody currently on the commission, nor I actually, well, yeah, I may have. We gave them frontage up on Colonel Ledger Highway, even though their address is on Wolf Ridge Gap.
Right. And God help them if somebody has a heart attack, because I don't, I don't know. You know, finding them, but
Yeah.
That's why, you know, when we were talking, y, you, you tried to solve that problem a little bit when you said, uh, I think it was in the subdivision regs that interior lots had to show that they could put a driveway in, right?
Yeah.
Frontage lots need to also do that. And this would have been denied. Obviously, these lots would have never been created. You would have had to, to continue this cul-de-sac down or this road down to provide them frontage. And that would be better design. Um, there is, that's a better look at it. Okay, just that one cracked me up.
Yeah.
Um, so I have about a hundred more of those examples. Um, it, it's this, it's this bit, I just.
Well, the way all those driveways came in, we tried to get against that. And, and that's why the intent was nice, but the execution was amazing.
Yeah, I mean, and don't feel like you have to give away the farm. I mean,
Literally.
You don't, you don't have, this open space is absolutely pointless. This is just, people are just dumping stuff there. There's no wildlife, they, there's a driveway in the middle of it, you know. This should have been, you know, you, it's, it's This should have been, you know, it's, it's off the tax rolls. You're not getting any benefit from it. No public's getting any benefit from it because who's gonna go take a hike in this, you know, helmet 240 foot strip and walk to the corner and walk back and go down somebody's driveway? They, nobody can access this. So that was this is just bad. It's bad. So, and this is not legal. So let's think about, you know, in the future, like, how do we make sure that this doesn't happen? And I did notice you did have, we went over it today. Mike has to do all the math for me in any geometry because I don't understand it. But you did have a regulation that said something about these cul-de-sacs having to be you know, a, a certain, what was it? My, like the
Yeah, all the lines coming off that are property lines have to pass through the center of the circle and be radial. And we didn't do that. We just they're not even tangent. They're just terrible.
So, but if you stuck to that, then you get that traditional subdivision where you have the, the front lots along the, the, you know, the length of the road before it gets to the bowl. And then you have your pie at the top and you know,
But we, but we tried to avoid the, one of the first designs that came in. We had the 25 foot driveway, so they had a frontage lot with like 50 feet and then two 25 foot driveways or three 25 foot driveways. And we're sitting there going, why are we running three driveways up a 75 foot strip and wasting that land? How do we get down to one driveway? I know we can share it. And so concept was good. The execution was terrible.
There's, I mean, there's other ways that you can do it. And so if you eliminate all, you know, too many special interior lots, you don't allow the stacking, you know, at least you're gonna force a front lot, rear lot, front lot, rear lot type of scenario versus the two, you know, flags together. I know there's other ways to do it and it's, I feel like you're, you were being generous to a fault. And, and, and think about the property owner later on when they have to do a survey of that, some of those lots. Can you imagine? Like, because you, you know, you, you want people to, you, you require monumentation every 50 feet or something along a shared driveway. Uh, that surveyor made a lot of money on some of those, you know, those long flags all the way up. And it's just, you know, it's not easy for anyone. It's, where do you put your fence on a lot like that? You know, so.
Down the middle of the driveway.
So, uh, I mean, you know, I'm, I don't live here. I'm not married to those numbers. I'm just as, uh, you know, I've been planning for a long time. I just think you, this is almost like a baby step. I would have made those a lot, those frontages much, you know, bigger actually, and, and, and been a little harsher on sharp, shared driveways and whatnot. So I'm trying not to radically change everything that you have, but if we could take a step towards eliminating some of those diagrams, the possibility of any of those types of subdivisions happening, again, I think it would be a start. But I know I come across as a little pushy, but I'm not. I mean, I'm just the planner. You guys.
Not you, Julia.
I was, I was looking as we're doing this in my office with Tony and I and, and Juliette, and we've got Juliette blocking the door. So we've got nowhere to run.
That's it.
She had a strap. Never hold a, never hold a contentious meeting in an office with only one door, you know?
Well, I think, I, I think, you know, you've got some beautiful areas and you have some aggressive developers in your town who will take advantage of regulations like this and you're gonna end up with some poorly designed subdivisions when you could have some really beautiful ones. So. Um, so that's what I've done. I have finished the draft of, of the rest of the regulations too. I don't want to overwhelm you, but the other thing we have to go through are the uses. And so I, I can tell you just briefly, what I did was, um, took all of your uses that you had and I categorized them. And then I took out the redundant ones and I added a general category for each of the categories. So if it's commercial, there's always a general commercial, industrial, there'll always be just general industrial. This will, will allow, you know, uses that we haven't anticipated to stand a chance of getting approved in the town, right? So we, we probably none of us thought of bark and brew, you know, that combo. But you know, you want to be able to entertain you know, new things that are coming along. Um, and then the important part there is if you, if you add that flexibility, of course, you want to make absolute sure that your definitions are spot on and that you have supplemental regulations that are spot on and that address any potential, uh, you know, negative thing that we, you know, for like an industrial use, you want to make sure you're accommodating for noise or bigger frontage for trucks, you know, whatever it is that you're worried about that you cover that in supplemental regs. And that you have excellent site development standards that they ought to comply with. And if you have all of those in place, then it's not as scary to have a general category. Um, because it's impossible to anticipate every single potential use um, that's going to be proposed. And I can definitely tell uh, by the uses that you had, that you had people come in with a proposed use and you added that use only for that development. And that's why you had many that were quite similar. You know, it just didn't make sense. So I've generalized all your uses. I kept some of the individual categories because they're nuisance uses. And I wanted to make sure that we had, you know, supplemental regs for them. Um, and then we have site development standards for you and better definitions. And so, uh, when we get through the uses of where they're allowed, uh, then I can, I will release like the full draft for everybody to look at, at their leisure. And then we can start scheduling public hearings if you want to, of course.
Julie, one of the things that probably is worth discussing with the commission is, as you're talking uses the, the concept of buy right with definitions and supplemental regs versus, uh, special permits. And, and that's not necessarily for tonight, but uh, that was an eye opening discussion for me in a different way of looking at it that sure did simplify it.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're still wanting to encourage investment. So you don't want to go all special permit. Um, and no commission should be that micromanaging anyway, but you know, there's certain things you're allowed to regulate in statute and there's other things you're not. So I think if you have strong site development standards and, uh, definitions and whatnot, you can allow things by right because you know, they have to comply, they know what they have to comply with. If they comply, you say yes. If it's a scary use, maybe you make it a special permit and then they still have to comply with all of those supplemental regs, site development standards. And you have this, the separate special permit standards that deal with health and safety and you get to decide whether or not that proposal um, meets those. But, um, yeah, I'd have to think about that whole presentation and Mike, you could probably do it better than I can. So.
To Juliette for the presentation. And it's something we definitely, we definitely need. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the, from the commission?
Short comment. Um, while you're looking at these, I don't think our regs mentioned anything about, um, architectural projections.
I put those in.
You did? Okay. And, um, I, that's what I am most looking for.
In the dimensional like requirements?
Yeah.
Allowing it, uh, like, yeah.
A chimney or a, a overhang to get proper drainage away from the building or, yeah.
Yeah, I added that in.
Okay. And then do we say anything about, um, required, um, shielding of, you know, uh, like condensers or things like that, if they want to put them in the front yard? Is there anything about that?
No. So yeah, so remind me of that and I'll think about that of how to do that.
Thinking of the particularly smaller, uh, you know, closer together housing, um, situations where maybe it's more appropriate for the smaller zones, but something that could clean up some, some of the ugly without being character driven.
Yeah. And that's the other thing you have to think about too, is the character aspect. Cause I have to take all of those words out. You, you will have to tell me what it is. You know, that you're trying to preserve. So I can get it in there. I think I've, I've anticipated what it might be and tried to get it in there, but you'll see when you read it.
Cool. A lot of great work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the last couple of items, we have the approval of minutes. We have the the, uh, regular meeting of 10 February, 2022. I, everybody's received a copy. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions, et cetera? We don't need to bring them up, I don't think. If everybody's seen them. Uh, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of February 10, 2022.
Thank you. Katie's gonna second, I believe.
I second that.
Or Tom second it. All right. Moved by Marty, seconded by Tom Allen. Well, I can't do all in favor after roll call. Katie?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And myself, a vote yes. And then we have the, uh, the special meeting workshop. The draft minutes, um, I was there. So, um, I'll make the motion to approve the special meeting, um, minutes and somebody else who was there can second it.
Second. Paul.
Second by Paul, made by me. Uh, even if you weren't there, you can, you can vote or abstain. I don't really care. It's not required that you actually be there to approve minutes, but we'll do the roll call again. Katie?
Yes.
And, uh, Marty was there. Yes.
Yes.
And Tom, you were?
I wasn't there, but I did read all the presentations. I'll vote yes.
All right. And Paul is
Yes.
And I am. Yeah. So they're approving unanimously. Uh, correspondence, um, there are four items. The first three deal with, uh, 2021, 29 and opt out. And you all have a copy of those. Right. And the, the last one, Juliette, the, uh, extend the 90 day requirement. You want to just cover that quickly for us? What is that?
Which one?
I saw it, but I, I don't have a copy of it.
Yeah. So, um, James Bernardo and I are still working out some, uh, issues with the final plans. Um, still waiting for some accurate property descriptions and there, there was just a couple of typos on it. So Tony was going out of town and signed the 90 day extension just in case.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports, uh, the planner report.
I think you have to vote to accept that, you know, to grant that, don't you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
I'm not sure about.
Um, is that something we have to vote on or can staff do it?
I don't know. Mike, do you know?
We've, we've always held a vote because
Okay, then, uh,
It's a statute requirement that allows us to extend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll, I'll return a motion to, uh, then for the 90 day extension for 34 Village Drive. Somebody want to move it?
I'll make a move.
Okay, uh, we'll take Katie and then second by
Marty.
Marty, any discussion? Recorded vote again. Katie?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yes. Paul?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. I think now we can go on to town planner report, Juliette.
No, I'm still on. Sorry, I haven't eaten. I'm like fading fast.
I know. Hit the, hit the highlights.
All right. What are the highlights? Uh, most of my time has been spent on these regs. Really did struggle with those, uh, dimensional requirements. The grants are moving along. We should have another, we should have a public, uh, meeting about the housing plan pretty soon. Uh, he's done the first sort of demographic overview. Uh, so that should be coming up soon. The town green one is moving along. We still haven't heard about the community challenges grant, you know, for the sewer extension to use with the ARPA funds to get that pro, uh, project going. Lots it is still kind of stalled for that multi-use path, but I anticipate they'll move along soon. Uh, happy to be back with the sector group for the SEDS work, um, since that was my baby. Uh, so I'm looking forward to working with them to, to, uh, get that plan updated. Not much else. Uh, we do have our new, uh, CEO person starting on the 21st, I want to say. He is the current zoning official in Portland, Connecticut. Actually, do know of him. Uh, just part time. So it's still not a yay, but it's something. And then, yeah, Justin from the council of governments will help out with the wetlands. You know, reviews, although Nancy has completed her, her coursework, so I might lean on her a little bit.
Nice job, Nancy.
So we're, you know, we're trying to get, we're trying to get staff together and, um, we're trying to work out a plan to move me up to the front. So I, when, uh, we have two new people start very soon that I can be up there. So we're working out the details there. I think that's all my highlights.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, your report?
Probably the, the big change is we do have a court date for the initial court date for 39 Berry Drive. That was the addition built without a permit, either zoning or building. So that will be headed towards as long as it takes in the courts, which normally is a long time. Uh, as you look through the zoning permit applications, there's still more new single family homes coming, more additions coming. Uh, there was one accessory apartment in a basement and, and, but they've been pretty busy. They've been keeping Nancy and, uh, Roseanne busy. It's been kind of messy to go out and do ass builds. It's kind of muddy and wet or snowy and icy. And I don't bounce as well as I used to. So I've been avoiding some of those. A lot of inquiries coming in on changes in use, some in the commercial zones, uh, Doc Schiller's office sold and I knew something was up. Because I came in on Tuesday and there were six voice messages, all asking about the same property. It had been listed the Wednesday before, and everybody wanted to know what could they do in the Gales Ferry Design District. So that coupled with just the normal, what zone is this? And is this lot buildable? We talked about Abbey Road for a long time, how there was only one house out there. We've now got half a dozen applications for the other lots all at once. And that's the, that's at their vacant for 20 years. So most of the vacant lots are being taken up with housing. So I would anticipate we're going to see uh, applications for subdivision, which I've said before. I will say I've had a lot of fun as zoning official. Uh, Juliette has more gray hair.
Yeah.
It's amazing the difference between serving on a commission and trying to staff the same thing. Writing, writing what we thought were good regs and then trying to enforce them going, wonder what the heck I meant when we said this. So I, I, it, 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 uh, you really need to appreciate the efforts Juliette's put into uh, simplifying our regs really. There's probably going to be more pages, but it's going to be simpler. And some of the ideas we had back in 2017 and 18, the last time we changed them. Uh, she's actually fixing and achieving the, the goals that we had set that we just missed by a little bit. So, uh, as, as I become uh, a member of the public, so Eric and I can both testify your public hearings. Uh, I appreciate your guys' support. And, uh, Eric, we can agree. What the hell?
I don't want 20 pages from both of you though.
No, I don't do 20 pages. You're lucky. You get 20 words.
All right.
But thank you. I appreciated it.
We appreciate everything Mike has done on the commission and then taking over the Z, the ZEO job and done a marvelous job on that. So thanks for everything you've done, Mike. And I'm sure that you will not be going away. We'll be seeing you as well.
Well, I did a good job of hiding everything I screwed up. Well, not everything. There was one I got caught on, so.
He did great. You did great, Mike. And you're a godsend. So I appreciate it because you provided all the history that I couldn't possibly know.
I'm more than happy to give you history as long as I have to, don't have, don't have to write any letters or knock on any doors anymore. I, I, that'd be good.
Okay.
Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, folks, yes, I'm sorry.
One other thing, um, uh, Mark Perkins did come in. One other thing, um, uh, Mark Perkins did come in and he is interested in uh. Uh. Revisiting his stipulated agreement, so I'm, I'm gonna. Meet with the attorneys, I mean, if he has an attorney, the, he has to get an attorney to to start that process, but he's asked me to, you know. Take a look at it, and we all met together uh, with the mayor and Mike, and. So we're gonna be working on that, that, you do get a say in that as well, though. So let's see what the attorneys come up with, but then I'll bring it. Uh, in front of you guys as well, since it was initiated by P and Z, so.
Alright, thank you, any other business to come before the commission? If not, thank you, everybody.
There, there was one quick thing Juliette mentioned, we had said on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna try and do the the housing forum thing with uh, the Affordable Housing Plan. Obviously, since you're all going to the CCM training. That needs to be reset, and and Tony, that's probably you and Juliette to find the best time.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'll help you invite others. Uh. As you see some of the letters coming in and comments coming in, people don't understand the need for housing. So any forum we can provide them. Helps, helps you do your job and helps the town tremendously.
Thank you, Michael. And thank you, everybody, tonight. See you everybody in a month, if there was no other business, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
I don't, I don't have a business, but I have an announcement. I'm gonna be a mom. Oh, Mike, you're muted. You're just doing.
I was wondering why you didn't wanna be chair. No, that's not allowed, I can't do that, congratulations.
Thank you. August.
August, right?
No.
You're gonna be pregnant in the summer months.
I did, yeah, I know, I'm. I couldn't help it.
Make, make sure you have the baby like in early August, so you'll be back for the meeting.
Yeah. Yes.
That's great, though, Katie, congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Alright, everybody. Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good meeting tonight, thank you.